Uh, Demi Brady.
Here.
John Scherz here.
Here.
Prior here. Bye-bye here. Absent notice. Lisa Calmuna.
Here.
Kevin McCallum.
Here.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Dr. Outlaw.
Here.
Jamie.
Here.
Dr. Shu too.
Here.
Zoe Yers.
Here.
And Samantha Wootton.
Here.
Okay. Different hooking.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation without doubt, indivisible, with a reason just for all.
Okay, the Brandon High School report.
Okay, so just talking a little bit about academics. Okay, just talking about academics a little bit. So we just had our NWA testing. Twenty-four ninth and tenth readers scored on the top ten for both reading and math for the nation this year, so that's exciting. We had college application week where students were able to get help applying to FASDA in college. Students also began turning in acceptance letters and the counselors made a college-bound board, which is pictured on this slide. It's also covering some of the stuff, but that's okay. Yeah. There will be a senior field trip when we return from break to the suburban collection showplace where they will be able to explore many careers. And sophomores had a meeting for OSDC programs and will be followed up with a visit to the campus so they can get an idea if they want to do it or not. So for sports, football won the FML title and we got to host the playoffs, so it was exciting. Winter sports are just starting with tryouts. Games and tournaments will soon follow. There's supposed to be pictures up there, but they must not show them up. I just added them on there. So for student council, we've had like a few past events that have passed since we've been here last. We had haunted hallways with Link Crew, which was a really big success. It was a lot of fun to do and be part of. This was for grades like K through five and it was basically like we decorated the hallways. We had different rooms of a bunch of different stuff for Halloween and they had a lot of fun. We also had College Sweatshirt Spirit Day during the college application week that the counselors helped us out with. And then recently we, as a council, traveled to Cape Cod, the Conic, to better our leadership skills and bond as a council. This was on November 5th and 6th. And then on November 15th, we hosted our Fall Blood Drive. We had fifty-six donors, which exceeded our goal of thirty-nine, which was really awesome. We're in the middle of planning some events right now as well. Charity Week is coming up. It's going to be the second week of December. We do have one event that's going to be on the 7th, but we're still in the middle of planning that. We decided to donate to our Chosen State Charity. MASC, MAHS chooses a charity every year and we chose to donate there as well. It's Leader Dogs for the Blind. And then some ideas for the events are like breakfast funders, raffles, and dinner fundraisers. We are also planning our service project, which is in partnership with the Brandon Community Church's Community Closet. We will be filling bags with like necessities for those that need to utilize. And then when we host our FML meeting where all the councils will come in and like work together, we're going to be able to put some of that stuff together with them, so we're involving them as well. And then we've also been busy fundraising for our own councils, so we will be able to attend certain conferences, like our regional state conferences. And these are really important to us because they give us the opportunity to win awards for our school and set ourselves the examples and become better leaders while we're there. We see a lot of different things and it breaks new ideas back here and it's a lot of fun. And they do have COGS, so that's why we've been fundraising. The fundraising that we've been doing have included like Pyramid Bracelets as well as Jet Pizza fundraiser and we're now starting Pizza Kit and Cookie Dome fundraisers. Okay, so a couple other things. For our other clubs, National Honor Society recently inducted their new members. Dinner was served, pictures were taken, and second-year members had the opportunity to introduce inductees. Link Crew also conducted haunted halls, as Zoe was talking about earlier, alongside Stu Co. This was their second year involved in this event. They are also congratulating their freshmen on a job well done on the first quarter of the school year. Also, the play was performed on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It was called "The Fly on the Wall" and everyone involved did amazing. That's it. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, the superintendent's report.
Okay, for tonight, I'm going to turn it over to our amazing STEM program here. I think if you look at the last several years, I think progress that's been made in this area has been some of the most exciting things going on in our district. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Bob Larson. Going to talk, we have Mrs. Bevel here, Mrs. Spencer, Mrs. Hillbrand here, and a whole bunch of students that will talk about our STEM program, which is now K-12 in the current district.
Yeah, so that's exactly what I was doing the news at, or just these three t-shirts.
For Andy Bevel, I teach PLTW junior kindergarten through fifth grade. Did you, sorry. I thought everybody was under the same [inaudible]. Okay. Sorry. So the main focus that we really wanted to focus on tonight, the common thread that we have is what Dr. Outlaw had talked to a lot about, is the productive struggle. And it constantly happens to all of us, especially during STEM. Kids are working really hard and they're trying to figure things out and as the teacher and the facilitator and they're coaching them along, and sometimes I just stop and say, "Listen, if it's too hard for you, come and get me. I'm always here to help you, but it's okay to struggle a little bit." And that's our main focus, is struggling and being intervening and conferencing with kids and helping them know that they can do it. Some groups are going really far ahead of everyone else. Some groups take a little bit longer, but they know what the goals are. They're all working together collaboratively, cooperatively. And Haley and Stella are in fifth grade working on robotics and they're here to talk about what they do when things get hard. So this is Stella and Haley from Open.
Yeah. We're working on... We're working on, um... We're working, my test bed?
So this is the test bed that they built. It took how long? A couple weeks?
Yeah.
I get to see them for, once a week for forty-five minutes. And so their main goal, what they're working to achieve for the first module in PLTW is creating a robot. This test bed that they created helped them with the, so they use a software. They followed the directions to put this test bed together. And now, what's your learning target?
My learning target is to make this run.
Make it run. Figure out inputs and outputs of the test bed so that they do, when they are creating their robot and something goes wrong, it will help them troubleshoot and problems, figure out what's happening. So what do you do when things get tricky? Because it happens.
We problem solve with our group by talking about what to do next and what we might have done wrong. We go back and re-read the directions.
And those are two separate, your run, are you taking and move?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any questions for these ladies from the robots, from robotics?
I think it's the group that you work in.
Four.
Four.
So if you notice, each of the grades, the different things that they do, could you just quickly go through, like kind of continue them during kindergarten?
Sure. So it's all, PLTW is all about giving the kids those hands-on experiences. They're constantly creating, building, rebuilding, evaluate, talking about what worked, what went well, what didn't go well, and redesigning. Kids are doing that in junior kindergarten with like living and non-living, building shelters. Right now, they're building turkey shelters for Thanksgiving. Kindergarten, they're working on force and motion, which is, which feeds into balanced and unbalanced forces later in third grade. In third grade, they're creating gliders and they design their own gliders and they launch them and they're figuring out how all the forces work together. But in first grade, sun, moon, and stars, that really hits hard on curriculum. So does copper, use a matter in second grade. And fourth grade is doing project-based learning right now with bridges, which feeds into our math program. But then there's a whole nother coding component with module with PLTW. And that all works. There's a progression with that as well.
Hi, I'm Sarah Spencer. I'm the Project Lead the Way teacher for the middle school. And I brought two students with me that will present in just a second. They're very excited to share their devices that they've come up with for computer science. Middle school Project Lead the Way is offered as an elective course. There are three elective courses and throughout those three courses, they will be exposed to six total units. So this was the first unit, the first year, and it was Computer Science for Innovators and Makers. We learned how to code. And for the students that come in and know how to code because they're involved in a coding club through the elementary school, or they are involved in robotics at either Lego Robotics or FTC, some of them have very, they all have very different levels of understanding of coding. So we use a block-based programming and it's able, I'm able to differentiate within the individual course because each group, they worked as pairs. These two were not pairs, but they worked as pairs and they continued their advancement through the coding at their own pace, which is fantastic. So I have different expectations for different groups depending on what they are able to come in with and that knowledge and expertise they bring to start. So with that, I will share, this is, Tyler, you're going first, right? This is Tyler Leschuk and he is presenting his security device.
So my security device, you can see, is falling up, falling apart right now. It's okay. It's all right. Its main purpose is to safeguard my phone from burglars. And when I have...
If you want to put it on the table, like maybe, yeah, I can eat it. Because it's flat up there. Okay.
So basically, I have a microbit right here and when I press button A, I arm the device. I have to apply pressure to it, to the pressure sensor on the bottom to for it to have a smiling face come up. When I take it off, it sounds the alarm, it says alarm, and then it starts buzzing. And I can disarm it by putting it back on.
Now you know something, okay. Oh. Tyler's going to get shot.
Tyler, do you want to talk about the struggles that you've had and how you overcame them?
So we had lots of trouble programming the device because the pressure sensor was not wanting to cooperate with us, really. It was like, so you get one input and it wouldn't go up to it, so you had to mess around with it a lot. And the other thing was that we had trouble with the buzzer communicating with the pressure sensor because two different things and one's an output, one's an input, so it's a lot harder to do. So I eventually figured that out with me and my teammate. Our third struggle was probably finding, doing what we're doing right now is designing it and making it come to life, I guess, but that's about it. We had, did a presentation at school and it went very well. Me and my teammate did very well and I think that's about it. Thank you for your [inaudible].
And this is Nathan Starr.
Hello. Okay. So this is my security device. It's a box. So when you open it, a buzzer goes off. You close it, the buzzer goes off the other side. So the way we have it set up here is if you press this button here, why the box is closed, it does not go off. And then if you press the other button, the box is supposed to go off. So some of the things we struggled with is our code work fine and the box, the first time we put it together, worked perfectly. But then the next day we came back and we went to reattach some things and it wasn't working. So me and my partner, we went over our diagram for where the wires went three or four times. We couldn't figure it out, so we went over the code and then finally we found it out. So my buzzer that I have in here, it's got a, it's got a positive and a negative and I had to switch the wrong way, so it wasn't working. So we switched those and then it worked pretty good. One of the things I struggled with tonight actually is just putting it back together because at first I had them, all the wires were, most of them were different colors. There were two that were same color. So then I switched that, which allowed me to easily put it back together and work.
Would your next step be to code it to the cellphone if it doesn't get stolen to report that somebody's entered it today?
That would just my, I'd protect it from something else.
Actually, it protects anything.
Very good. All right, great job.
So I'm Leslie Hillbrand from high school and these are my two students, Robbie, Yihang, and Ella Mino. At the high school, we're a little different. We are, we go off of our curriculum. We have math and science classes running with the projects, so the projects get pulled out of our classes. So they could be pulled out of math or they could be pulled out of science. Our ninth-grade products are built around geophysics in algebra two or geophysics in algebra one, depending on your math track that you're on. Our 10th-grade products are bio and geo-based. 11th grade is chemistry and their math can be pre-calc, AP Calc, AP Stats, whatever they decide to take that year. We have, we're going into our 10th year next year, so we're excited about that. We want a primary reunion, we're starting to build an alumni database. We're hearing back from our students. So we actually on the next one have a little video that was from 2017. Oh, sorry. Yes, oh. But you gotta double, you double-click this a little bit. We double-click it, it'll go full screen. Is there volume on that?
During the Rover Roach project, you will form surgery and cockroach and influence its movements through a Bluetooth app. Your final project of sophomore year is the STEM promotion video. In this project, you will make a four-to-six-minute video promoting the STEM program.
I recommend STEM program because you get to collaborate with your peers and you have a channel of interest.
I feel it's a great place to learn and interviewing and different types of fields that we cover in the sense.
I recommend STEM for the reason that STEM is a more collaborative than the big school. We melded, we came out together, we just grew up really close in engineering.
Being in STEM allows them to work in groups, do new projects in our regular classroom that allow it, but also provide a lot of technology and engineering that the regular classroom needs.
STEM is a great opportunity for kids to develop their interpersonal skills, to work with other people, to learn to be creative, to have an opportunity to communicate.
In your junior year of STEM, you will be taking STEM chemistry with you in the Rover Roach. In the 3D printing lab, you will learn how to use Fusion 360 and make a model and print it on a computer. In the drone unit, you will become familiar with compliance of the drone FAA regulations and then learn how to fly a drone. In your final unit of STEM, you will make a journey of thought through, which consists of all your pictures and landings throughout the STEM career. What is senior camp?
Senior council, it'll be one semester class that students who have been in STEM for the last three years can take. They will be allowed to do one large project or several small projects. And they need to pick their projects. They can do electrical engineering, robotics, environmental project, whatever their passion is, whatever they're going to call it for, they actually get started on it.
What has been your favorite project in STEM?
My favorite project is on the bridge building. It was really nice to see the students work together and progress through the process and have a good final result.
I enjoyed the first step to interview a lot of how to do presentations, how to do proposals, how to build the bridge, how to design it.
My favorite project and teacher is the bridge. And the reason I like the bridge is number one, it's a real-life experience for students. They have to write a new professional proposal, professional presentations, and a ton of interviews. I know it's a lot of work, but it's definitely worth the life experience they get.
My favorite project in STEM is the Rover Roach experiment, that students can control a roach by using their phones and Bluetooth technology.
My favorite project in STEM is private life and policy. Kids really like to take private policies. It's the end of the years and they enjoy it, lots of them to be creative. They, some of the kids architect, they get really into it, some of the kids get really into logical art. It's a fun project, it's a cool year.
My favorite project in freshman year that I dropped because our design work and our [inaudible].
My favorite project was probably the 3D printing because I dropped it, turned out good.
So that was a video made two years ago. We moved products around based on curriculum. So right now, we're going through a full curriculum switch in science and math has gone to a new curriculum as well. So we are moving stuff around currently right now. But so Robbie is a junior, Ella is a sophomore, so they're in a different level. STEM, I teach the freshman with my sister STEM, so they are going to show you the hand-to-hand...
Human-to-human.
Human-to-human contact. I just had next word, so I'm a little, I won't do it. I don't want to do it. I have done this all the time, like I don't want to be any number that I am.
So this is a new project for STEM. The sophomores and the juniors are doing it this year because it is new. It goes more with neuro or bio. I can't remember the word.
The neurotransmitters and impulses in your body.
Yeah, so you have nerve impulses in your body. It's a lot of, I'm sure you know. Now Ella's going to flex for you right now.
All right, and when I flex, you can see the, this little thing, it reads my impulses.
See the light coming on?
Yeah.
And so here's the second part of it, which I'm not excited about. I can plug this in and yeah, I guess we're good there.
And when I move my hand, my impulses go through the wires and make Robbie move. I haven't really conceded, but...
It's not very pleasant.
Yeah, there's video of Robbie making a gesture that his friends were controlling the whole thing and he couldn't, he couldn't pull his fingers back down.
I'm a good student.
And he's a... He's not the kind of a guy.
And I can turn off the dial however much I want.
Well, and you were talking about console and they were out there trying to troubleshoot it, trying to figure out why they were having issues with the dials and if it was the battery or it was the Arduino, what was causing their issues out there?
The wires.
Yeah.
Another way is if you can complete the circuit.
I can complete the circuit by grabbing this. Wait, for it.
This is actually a Netflix...
He's having the time of his life.
I'm going to plug it now.
All of this stuff came out of UOM and it was originally called Back Your Brains and the guys who researched it were developing controllers so that people that were paraplegics, they could actually help them with some of their controls and they're actually having some success. And there's a Netflix series that basically goes through the first two episodes are kind of what our STEM kids go through in biology, their sophomore year, some of that stuff. So Ella's just finishing up that. He had that last year, but Miss Bannan decided because we got that new stuff in that because they didn't get a chance to see it, she brought them down and let them see that project run. So we, we have some products that are really big, like the bridge is really big. We're in the bridge right now. We're deep in bridge right now. And then we have some products that are just, you know, like a few days in the lab and they're working. And then we have projects that are full-year projects like that, so.
The Netflix show is called White Rabbit Project.
Yes.
It has Cary Grant, Tory from Mythbusters, they're the star.
Yes.
And I'm a big Mythbusters fan.
I actually emailed from college students, who've college kids email me and say, "Miss Hillbrand, with the Netflix series, you've got to have your kids watch it. It's just like what we do in STEM." So I sent it over to them and the kids are all into it, so. Any questions?
What was that called again? White Rabbit?
White Rabbit Project, yes. The first couple episodes are what we go through in STEM, so. We're currently going through a ginormous shift, so this year has been a little difficult because all the science curriculum has changed and rather than change our curriculum plus change our projects with it, because we are content through the projects. We are, our projects have to relate to what I'm teaching in science and what my sister's teaching in math. We're trying to build on that in the STEM lab, so that's always our goal, to try to build on that kind of stuff and build on engineering skills and things that are going to help the kids in college. The portfolio idea is to help them build on college portfolios, build up their resumes. We have kids that want to go into architecture, civil engineering, so them to have all their draft and things compiled in one spot. We stopped doing that for a while and are bringing it back because the kids really liked it, so.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next, public comments and questions on agenda business. Okay, none? Okay, next, approval of consent agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Motion passed. Information and discussion items, finance reports.
Yes, Brian and John, where do you want? Brian and John and myself, we interviewed candidates for the LUD project, the Newton project, the Harvey, and the Buff Rush system. We interviewed and then did second interviews and Brian also did some late work in that at the... We interviewed, and then did second interviews, and Brian also did some laid work in bedding these feathers. We will be recommending the low bidder on all three. They also happened to be, they were very good, so we were able to go with a low bid, which we always try to do. And we think we've got some good feathers and good prices, and Brian and John will talk about any details.
Well, obviously, we, the three projects, the three big projects are Bus Garage, Bus Wash Station, the lighting project for middle school, Lockwood, excuse me, Lockwood, Oakwood. And I've worked in so many school districts. Oakwood and also Harvey Swanson. So the, that's the lighting project, and then the roofing project at Harvey Swanson as well. We're going to be doing 60% of the roof with an energy-efficient, adding insulation, white roof that's going to improve the, not only the insulation, but the Duralast, it's called the Duralast product, excuse me. And it's basically a pool liner that resists water penetrations. The nice thing about the Duralast product is that they warrant the product for 20 years. One of the nice things about that warrant is that they not only warrant the roof, but anything under the roof. So if there's ever a penetration or failure of the product, they will replace ceiling tiles that get damaged, and the electrical appliances, all the teacher products in that room that may get, not that we want that to happen, but it's nice to know that they warrant their product to the point where they'll replace anything under the roof, and that's unprecedented, unprecedented in the roofing industry, I would say. So if you have any questions on those, Brian is here.
Do you have, you kind of spotted another building here, it sounds really familiar.
We do not have any Duralast products in the district yet.
And we've talked about like the pool roof, we've talked about this Duralast somewhere. In discussion, it's definitely come by a minute and a half.
I'm a real fan of it. There are a couple of reasons. One, generally, you can put a Duralast roof on for a third, one-third of the cost of a EPDM or a rubber roof or a built-up roof. So not only is it less expensive, it has long durability, and also that their warranty is, in my opinion, second to none in the district, so.
The contractor who was getting the award for the roofing, Zimmer Roofing out of Port Huron, they've done many districts with us over the past few years with the same product. So they're, you know, it's a very good contractor, they're very familiar with the product, and they're one of the recommended installers by the company as well, the Duralast System Company. So they're very familiar with the product, so we're very excited about that.
There'll be 100% more insulation in the roof than we currently have, so it's also going to be much more energy-efficient.
And the bus washing system, will that be done soon, by the winter, or?
It's a custom system, so by the time we award it, get it fabricated, we're probably looking at about a March timeframe to have it installed.
Mary, listen, probably...
We're looking at solutions.
It should be a complaint, because I know we had a fault. We did that last weekend, we're getting some quotes signed, calling some stuff, we have to find itself, we're going to be convenient in two weeks, and hopefully find out.
Another nice side on the lighting retrofit is that the, all the products that, in the contractor that was chosen because they were best price, also, all the products are made in Michigan. So every, all the light fixtures that we're getting, instead of coming from China or somewhere else, are coming, being made, assembled, produced in Michigan. So we thought that was a plus as well.
Time plan for the lighting, you're doing all schools, right?
We're starting with three. The high school is going to be in the next days, but it will be done by summer, by the end of summer. But the three, the three, the middle school and the two elementaries will be done in nine weeks from the day that we approve the contract, so.
We'll be working nights, and we promise that we will not have to disrupt any classrooms. So they'll go into a classroom at three, four o'clock, and the other night, and the classroom will be back intact, ready to go the next day, so that's what we're doing.
They do about 300 fixtures a night.
Yeah, the contractor is local, and it's kind of a, it didn't sound too good to be true, because the next best price is about $127,000 more, and then we went way up from there, so we really go for getting a good deal, yeah.
How long's the company been in business?
Five.
PNF has been in business for...
They're a construction company, they've been in business for over a dozen years, they're doing these lighting retrofits, they...